Good afternoon. I'm gonna call the Monday, March twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five meeting to order. Invocation, pledge of allegiance, Commissioner McClure, please.
Amen. Father, we thank you today, as we thank you every day.
Yes.
For the way that you're with us, for the way you watch over us, for the way you dictate the things that we should be and should not be doing.
Amen.
And Lord, as we sit here today in the government, we would pray, Lord, that you would give us the wisdom and its discernment.
Yes, Father.
To make decisions that would bring honor and glory to you. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good job there. Under recognition tonight, I don't ever recognize Sheriff Simmons very much, but he's here at most of the meetings, so glad to have you, Sheriff Simmons. Not seeing anyone else, we'll roll alone. Recognition of veterans, Mr. McClure?
See if I can get this right. Yesterday, I asked, the last time I asked for visitors. We'll do the veterans this time. If you're a veteran, would you please stand, be recognized? I tell you, it's important how veterans are. We just need to thank God for them. How many World War II veterans is there? I saw something on it the other day, not many, not many.
Yeah, I'm sure.
Oh, we appreciate you.
Yep. Recognition, election in chamber, Commerce, Travis Stewart. Is Travis here?
I don't see him here, sir. He may be watching online.
All right. And I'm gonna recognize the Davidson County citizens. I think we got a few out there, so glad to have y'all too. If you're not from Davidson County, you ought to work your way this way, 'cause it's a good place to live. All right, register for public address. Anybody wishing to speak, public address, needs to sign up here. Adoption of the agenda, or any changes to the agenda, Mr. Martin?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if we can, I would like to ask the board to pull the closed session for economic development from the agenda. We aren't gonna need to do that tonight.
Okay, so we're pulling closed session?
Just for economic development.
For economic development.
The personnel one?
Still stays, all right. Do I have a motion for the amended agenda?
I make a motion that will approve the amended agenda.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. All right, anybody signed up for public address here?
There is a public.
Mike, Lita, Lighter?
Good evening. I have three short questions or points regarding the sportsplex tonight. And to be clear, I'm largely supportive of this project, but I do have some concerns. First, at the last meeting, I raised a question about why adjoining landowners weren't being informed about the plans for the three hundred and fifty acre tract of land that the county purchased in our community. I understand that since this project won't involve borrowing money, the county wasn't legally required to inform the community about it. But now that it's approved, will there be an information session where we can get details regarding the project, including the timeline? I've been to information meetings for large projects in other parts of the state, and having planners, DOT, and others give details and answer questions really help to alleviate concerns and get the community on board. My second question is, or point, while I'm sure there will be measures put in place to handle the increased water runoff and silt from the fields and parking lots, has there been discussion for fixing the existing issue of stormwater flooding and silt incursion into High Rock Lake from the property? We already have flooding four inches over the top of Urban Drive during a hard rain, as the culvert there can't handle current flow, handle the current flow coming off the property. And there's already a large section of Duck Cove that is only passable by boat at full pond due to sediment buildup. What can the county do to fix these existing issues with the property? Third question. At the last meeting, I raised a concern that neighbors and myself have over the RV park that will be, will be part of the project. The plan to limit the stays in the RV park to one week is great. That will stop most people from making it home, but as with other parks in the state, the large number of people going in and out of the park and the bathrooms and showers will be a magnet for panhandlers and homeless people who will sleep in cars or pitch a tent in the woods. What will the county do to prevent the homeless encampments that we see at interstate onramps from showing up in our backyards? Thank you.
Thank you. I'll answer a couple of those questions, and we don't usually do that during this part of the meeting. But the funding was just approved a couple of weeks ago, so there's a lot of planning that's gonna have to be done, and we will invite the public for the planning process and all those things that you mentioned. Thomas, if you can write those down, the flooding's on Urban Drive, or whatever, the engineers, I'm sure, will look at that, and let's hope it's better than it was before, okay? So, yep, thank you. All right, Barry Woodward?
Thank you for allowing me to ask your questions. I too live on Urban Drive, and I'm not lakefront, I'm more the forest front that backs up to what is the border on the backside of this sports complex property. There's some concerns that I have about it, as far as, and from what I'm seeing from the maps, and I don't know if it's gonna stay the same or not, there's quite a buffer between the property line and where, it appears that woods will remain in place for walking trails and stuff. And the reason why I have concerns for it is because not only myself, but there's a couple of other people that are along that area that hunt our property. And, you know, I have some concerns about, number one, people's safety, number two, them jeopardizing their safety by wandering into areas during those hunting seasons that they shouldn't be in, just exploring the woods or whatever. I also share his concerns about the flooding at the bottom of Urban Drive, even though I don't cross that way very often, because my house is before that. But, and again, he's brought up some really good points that I'd like, like to see more information on. The other thing that I'm concerned about, seriously concerned about, is some of the infrastructures that's gonna have to take place for this main construction, I guess you might say, to start taking place. So, you know, roads, sewer systems, it's my understanding that there's only one nine-inch line that runs down there, and it's the only reason why it's there is for the school. I'm concerned about the influx of restaurants, quick fast food stuff that's gonna possibly come along with this, and what it's gonna do to our community. One of the big things I'm worried about is what we're gonna do with the Rhodes and Riverwood neighborhood. They are falling apart. They put down tar and gravel on it five years ago, and just to be blunt about it, they put lipstick on a pig, and now it's all falling off. And they're in there almost every day putting the bag coal patch or whatever it is in holes that just pops right out the next time it rains. It's just getting worse. So, and I know that there are, in the plans, there's an exit drive coming out River Oaks, which is the old cell tower road, comes out to Beckner, and then one out on Riverwood itself. The traffic that gets confused and takes a left turn coming out of River Oaks and ends up going around in a circle back there, increased traffic, what we can do to direct that traffic out the exit to where they're supposed to go, instead of riding through our neighborhoods?
Three minutes, sir.
Yeah. And we'll look into that, okay? I mean, we've got a long process of getting this same design, so we'll try to make it as nice as we can be, okay? One thing that he did mention well ago, Mike did, if you would, check with, Thomas, if you will get with Dan Nicholas Park, and see if they have an issue with homeless coming in there and staying, I would like to know that as well, so. And some of this, what we're trying to do is a little bit like Dan Nicholas Park, maybe. I don't know if you've been there or not, over Monroe County. And while we're on this subject, I wanna bring this up. I've heard some untruths about commissioners here, including myself, that can do these contracts and get rich and work on county projects. That's not true at all. Any commissioner up here cannot touch a county contract or any company that we bring in and give us incentives to. If we give them incentive, nobody can. None of these commissioners can do a thing for them, okay? So, if anything, it's probably cost me hundreds of thousands of dollars by not being able to do that. So, again, if any one of these commissioners know anything about somebody doing a contract for a company, you can't do it, so. Anyhow, untruths there, so.
Amen.
Thank you very much. If you'll pass that on, we'll move on to the next, next item number. And thank you very much, Mike and Barry, and we will, we will, we'll have some public input on this, I'm sure. Guess what, Lee, you didn't have to fight Jason for your chair tonight, huh?
I know it. I slid up here a little early.
Right. We're gonna do a little bit of public hearing now for some zoning, seven A, rezoning request by K O Z Properties LLC, if you'll lead that one off, eighteen point four four acres.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first request is by Matt Costelik to rezone property located in the Cotton Grove Township, tax map eighteen, lot four, containing eighteen point four four acres, more or less. Said property is located on the east side of NC Highway eight, at the Hunt Road and Hugh Miller Road intersection at sixty-six eighty-five NC Highway eight. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RA two, Rural Agricultural District, to that of CZ HC, Conditional Zoning Highway Commercial District. If you would please divert your attention to the overhead projector. The original application was for this property right here. Both of these tracts are on the same deed, and when we noticed, we have to notice all the way around the entire deeded property. Mr. Costelik went through the planning board and got a positive recommendation, running into some issues with perking on this side, wanted to move over to this side. So that was a substantial enough change that we remanded it back to the planning board for an additional recommendation that happened last Tuesday. They, again, recommended approval of the application on Tuesday. So we're looking at this property right here, and it is actually, the map is accurate. It's only eight point nine four acres in total, and it's the area that's highlighted, crosshatched in yellow. So, and it's on the west side of NC Highway eight, which is right here. Hunt Road cuts off to the east. Hugh Miller Road cuts off to the, to the west here. So that, that's to get you, it's just down below Southwood School, which is just up here off the map. The, I'm gonna let you open the public hearing. I know Mr. Costelik is here to explain his application, and we'll, I'll elaborate further.
Okay. I declare the public hearing open. Mike, if you wanna, you said he's here? Yep, there you go.
Thank you very much.
Glad to have you.
Good evening.
Yep, good evening.
So I'm, I'm here to answer some questions. My name is Matt Costelik. I'm the developer on this project. We are proposing a boat and RV facility here, mixed with some traditional drive-up storage. So I'm gonna kinda just give you kind of a brief rundown of everything here. So this is kind of a preliminary layout here. Nothing's been drawn up by our civil guy yet, but you can kinda see a couple of climate controlled storage buildings on one side of the property, and then on the other side, we're gonna do some of those canopy cover boat and RV parking. Give you a couple of different views here. So we think, this is, and this is just a basic rendition here, this is kinda based on what we already have in Davidson County. We have two facilities currently, but this is, this is what we're going for. This is the look, this is the, kinda the curbside appeal we're going for with this facility. So I'm gonna scroll through and just give you guys a, a little bit of the layout here. So you can see kinda on the backside of the property, some of these covered canopy parking. I'm sure you guys have seen these before. But we think there's great demand, there's tons of slab homes going up in every direction. We know that these homes don't have ample storage. People are parking boats, recreational vehicles outside. We wanna provide a safe and secure site for people to store their vehicles, and their, and their boats, and their RVs, and all the, all the things that people don't wanna put in their driveway and, you know, be open to any sort of vandalism or theft or anything like that, so. Couple more, couple more pictures here. And I'm happy to answer any other questions that you guys have.
So will this be impervious pavement, or are you planning on paving it, or what?
We're gonna, we're gonna pave it. We're gonna put some asphalt down for the drive aisles and some slabs for the buildings.
I'm a little bit confused, Lee.
Yes, sir.
By the appearance of that, go back to... Okay. Now where's number eight at there?
This is a...
Oh, is that the front? Is the number eight running down through the front there?
This is eight here. This is, this has kinda been a...
Okay, it said Hunt Road.
It does. We, this is, this is the first rendition before we had to switch it, so it's kind of a, this is more so just to kinda get a feel for what it's gonna look like, not so much the layout.
But that's not Hunt Road.
No, no, sir.
Okay.
Hugh Miller Road will be to the side of it, yes, sir.
Okay, okay, thank you.
So, so tell us where it's at there, please.
So, yeah, so highway, it'll be on the, I guess the...
It's gonna be on the west side of Highway eight, just south of Hugh Miller Road.
Got you.
Okay.
Yeah.
Graceley Meadows is the new eighty lot subdivision that's just north of this property. Jimmy Johnson's old house, right there on the corner, is just across Hugh Miller Road from this tract.
Yeah, I got you.
All right.
And we're gonna, we're gonna fence it in, we're gonna have brick facade on the front of it, you know, fully gated, so.
The brick columns, like I see on the fence, is that what you're gonna do, the brick?
We're gonna do brick facade on the buildings, not so much the fence. We'll have some ornamental aluminum up front with the fencing, and then some, some chain link on the sides.
I thought it said some sort of like brick columns on the fence, or...
Yeah, this is, let's see here. Yeah. Our, our, the brick more so is gonna be on the building, so you can kinda see the, you know, outlining the doors.
Right.
Those columns will just be black aluminum.
I got you. Okay, let's see what the publicist got to say. I don't think the board's got any questions for you this time, so.
All right.
You can have a seat on the front row if you'd like, and... Anybody wishing to speak in favor or in opposition to this rezoning? Anybody wishing to speak in favor or in opposition to this rezoning? All right, say none, uh, no other questions by the board member? Yep, all right. Um, Mr. Jones, do you have any questions for, uh, staff?
No, I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay. All right. Um, I'm gonna declare the public hearing closed. Lee, uh, staff recommendations?
Thank you, sir, I would like to briefly go over the conditions that are proposed, this, this is a C Z, Conditional Zoning H C request. The property will use from compartmented lot storage and covered boat and RV storage and associated office if needed. Property will be completely fenced with a motorized gate in the front. Landscaping will be added as a buffer around all fenced bordering a road. Setbacks, uh, setbacks will be within guidelines submitted on plan. All lighting will retain, remain focused within the property. N C Highway eight access will be off, I mean, N C D O T access will be off of Highway eight unless D O T requires otherwise, and the property will have an erosion control plan from a licensed civil engineer. Um, staff is gonna support the request, the, as, um, Mr. Costelik alluded to, we've got Gracely Meadows just across the street, you've got twenty, Twenty One Oaks subdivision, which has eighteen lots on the north side of Hunt Road. Um, these homes don't have the storage that, that, you know, traditional homes used to have, so these are, these are folks' basements. Uh, you know, the changing in the area has primarily been residential, but when he moved to the west side of the property, it actually helped his request because he's actually touching a couple highway commercial zoning districts. Now, High Rock Motors, uh, is directly to the south of this property, right here, this is highway commercial, High Rock Motors, here's Rock Crush Road, and there's a little C Z, a C U H C, which was for a car lot, that's on, uh, Sheriff Johnson's old property right there. This, again, Gracely Meadows and Twenty One Oaks. Uh, we would cite land development plan policies one, one, one three, one four, one five, one seven, one eight, five four, five five, five six, five seven, five nine, and seven four, all in support of the request. And we would tender, uh, it meets the zoning regulations and ordinance due to change or changing conditions in the area, and it being contiguous with other commercial. Staff would recommend approval and ask you to adopt a statement of consistency.
Ready for a motion, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
I like the motion that we approve the request and adopt the resolution or a statement of consistency.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Yes.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Ah.
Any opposed? That motion carries, thank you, sir, have a good afternoon. All right, moving on to seven B.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our second is a request by Group Twenty One LLC to rezone property located in Cotton Grove Township, Tax Map thirty seven, Lot two, containing fifteen point seven four acres, more or less. Said property is located on the south side of Owen Road, approximately one mile south of the N C Highway eight and Owen Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of R A two, Rural Agricultural District, to that of C Z R M one, Conditional Zoning Medium Density Residential District. Um, if you please divert your attention to the overhead. If you'll notice, this is the track that's received so much attention that the county's recently purchased, this is Owen Road. Uh, the property here is highlighted in yellow to get you acclimated. The board heard this, this request, uh, a couple months ago, it's a C U H C property, and, uh, this, this is the way you go up to, uh, downtown Southmont, and this way is out to, uh, N C Highway eight. The, um, Ms. Attorney, Ladidra Matthews, is here to represent the application after the, uh, public hearings opened, and we'll hear from them to elaborate on the application.
Okay. I'll declare the, uh, public hearing open, if you wanna come, please, ma'am. Good afternoon.
Thank you. Good evening, um, Chairman Yates and Commissioners, my name is Ladidra Matthews. Again, I'm a, a land use attorney for Fox Rothschild, office address one oh one, South Tryon Street, Charlotte, North Carolina. And I have a presentation to share with you. Um, I will try not to be redundant of the, uh, preliminary information you just got, or the staff recommendation that you'll get afterwards. Um, but just to give you a little bit more background and a different view of the site, there's two different, um, photos here. The site is highlighted in red in that L shape, um, towards the bottom of both of those. At the top, you see a zoning map, at the bottom is an aerial. Um, you can see a little bit better, it's zoomed out, to the west is the Sports Plex, um, future Sports Plex area that we've heard some conversation about today, and then about a mile to the east is, uh, North Carolina Highway eight. Um, if you look at the top of that, um, picture with the zoning map, the darker green color, um, is R M one, which is the zoning district that we are, excuse me, the zoning district that we're requesting today with conditions. The current zoning of the site, again, is R A two. Um, and, uh, in R A two, um, by right, there's already, um, you're allowed to have duplexes due to the size of this, um, site, which is fifteen point seven four acres, that comes out to about thirty four units, so seventeen duplexes would be allowed by right. This board recently approved a text amendment to your zoning ordinance to allow for quadplexes and triplexes under, um, the residential code in, in R M one. So, that is why we, um, are requesting this rezoning to allow for quadplexes, but we're, we're not requesting any, um, change in the underlying density that would be allowed here. So, instead of seventeen duplexes, you'll see on the site plan, we're requesting about, I think, seven or eight quadplexes and one duplex, um, in a campus style development, as you see here. So, that would allow less impervious area, more grouping to the north of the site to allow for more open space towards the back. Um, this isn't a watershed, so maximum impervious area allowed is, uh, I think twenty four percent. Um, this site with the campus style development that's proposed is, uh, right under fifteen percent impervious area. Um, with the campus style development, um, you are required under the ordinance now to have an eighteen foot, um, internal street access connecting, um, the site. Um, so that's shown here in kind of the gray, there's one site access proposed on Owen Road. If you see that yellow star, that is to allow for, um, turnaround for fire access. And then the yellow rectangle you see towards the northwest of the property is the approximate location of the one duplex. So, again, you have eight quadplexes, one duplex, that gives you thirty four units. Um, but all of these, and especially the duplex, um, locations are subject to change. And then this is the soils map that was included in your, um, in your materials today. The red hatched area highlights the soil that is suitable for septic. Um, the site does not, of course, need all of this. Um, I think, I'll try to use the pointers, so this would be the primary, primary, um, area that is used, and if more is needed, um, right here, we had a question about that at planning board. This would be kinda reserved or secondary if needed, but the plan right now is to utilize this kinda front area. You will see that there is a pa- pond on site, this is a manmade pond, it would be filled in, um, if the rezoning is approved today. So, as you know, as a board, you are, um, charged with considering whether the rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Here are a few policies from the comprehensive plan, um, that are aligned or met here with this rezoning. Without reading those to you, um, they encourage, uh, open space, um, and a variety of housing, um, and an increase in housing stock. So, with that, and I'll also mention that, as Mr. Crook said, the planning board did recommend unanimously, um, a recommendation of approval. I'm here to answer any questions you have, we have representation from Group Twenty One in case you have some questions that I cannot answer, and I would ask that, um, I reserve, be allowed to, uh, come back up and rebut any testimony or questions from any opposition to the extent they're here today.
Okay, that's granted. Uh, any questions for her by the board?
I have one, of, of course. Do you have a picture of what you're planning on building?
There are no pictures in the presentation, and I don't think that anywhere submitted with the application.
Bring the pictures with them to show us what we're, what we're looking at?
Sure.
I just wondered if you had brought you the picture.
Would it be helpful to hear from the, um, representative of Group Twenty One to describe them to you? I guess words are not pictures, but...
I know what the, the, the multi-purpose duplexes are, but that's, they have different designs, and I was just interested in what they're gonna end up looking like.
Sure, and I think that the, um, Mr. Jonathan Cochrane can maybe describe those to you, but unfortunately, we don't have pictures today as a part of the presentation. So, if that would be helpful, I welcome him up.
Just leave. No, sir, no, so there, there were none submitted with the application. It's, it's not a requirement, but like you said, it is, it's not a bad idea either.
Yeah, so we know what we're looking at, it's the only thing. Okay, thank you.
Would that be helpful, or...
Well, let's see if we got some other que- let's see the oppositions first, and then if Mr. Schell wants to call somebody up, he can after.
That sounds like a plan, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right. Um, did I open the public hearing or not, I don't remember, Lee, I didn't, all right.
Yes, sir.
Anybody wishing to speak in favor or in opposition? You can speak in favor or opposition if, uh... There you go, you don't know if it's in favor or opposition, but whichever way it is.
It could be in, considered in opposition, this brings to mind, again, the question that I had earlier as far as the infrastructure for that part of the county, that part of Highway eight and Southmont area. Um, I noticed one thing on there of having appro- or appropriate wastewater treatment, um, available for such a development as that, which goes along with the idea of the Sports Plex as well. Water and sewer is a big thing down there, a lot of people have wells and most everybody's on a septic tank. That's the only question I had.
Yes, sir, it's gonna be on septic tank, and, uh, of course, they will have to get an approved erosion control plan from Deener, um, North Carolina, uh, what are they, I call it Deener, what is it?
E Q.
D E Q.
Department of Environmental Quality.
So, there is a permit they have to apply for and meet those requirements, okay? Ken, that's above our pay grade, but they usually, that's, uh, the special, the specialists that do that, so. All right, anybody wishing, uh, to speak in favor and opposition? All right. Um, hear none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Uh, Commissioner Schell, did you, uh, wanna, any other discussion, or...
Who did you say you had here to explain about? I'd like to know what...
Jonathan Cochrane.
What kind of property, I mean, kind of, uh, screening's gonna be around it, and I, I don't see anything, so the only problem I have is I don't know what I'm voting on here.
Okay.
That's gonna be in, introducing to the neighborhood.
It, it, it will be.
And Mr. Crook will, uh, discuss some of the conditions that have been offered, but I will call up Mr. Jonathan Cochrane to give you an idea of the design.
Well, leave me, have you seen anything about buffering or anything like that?
The, the conditions that are presented tonight are, they will, they will obtain an N C D O T driveway permit, pave or concrete the first fifty feet of the driveway per N C D O T requirements, be a maximum of thirty four units, construct a minimum eighteen foot wide all weather surface road within the development, retain as many trees as possible for screening, add landscaping around the new multifamily buildings. Those are the conditions that are proposed right now.
Okay.
If, if that doesn't satisfy concern, maybe Mr. Cochrane can come up and, and describe what he's gonna build, and that, that's, that's up to the discretion of the board.
Well, one of your conditions, you say, as many trees as possible?
Correct.
That can be one.
Right, and, and there's not, there's not a lot of trees, there's not a lot of trees on the front of this property, so these buildings will be seen.
There's gotta be some...
Yeah, yes, sir.
But I'm, I'm not sure, we have the authority to tell them how many trees they can leave and how many trees they can't. Now, we have a, we have a landscaping, um, ordinance that I guess somebody would have to go by on the front or the sides, but am I correct in saying that? I mean, I know they're going to clear trees in the back for a septic system, so...
We, we do have landscaping, uh, that, if we're looking for a mechanism to heavily screen this, that will not do it. That, the, the most it'll be a, a eight foot street yard planting that will have a couple decorative understory trees with some shrubs in it. But, yeah, there, there's not gonna, there's no foliage on the front of this property, so these buildings will definitely be seen. Um, I think the condition speaks more to the, uh, repair area in the back, keeping that wooded until it's needed, or if it's needed for septic. Um, I, I assume the property is still wooded at this time, everything's still wooded.
I, I didn't have a question about, uh, how many trees, I just thought that if you put...
Sure.
The, uh, possibility in there that you, if you don't have that, you might as well not have a condition.
But it's up to the people to put the conditions before us and us to approve them.
It, it's, being conditional zoning, there can be a neg- a negotiation, but both parties have to agree to the condition. So, if the board is a little uneasy with the screening mechanism across the front, a discussion can be had with Mr. Cochrane or, or Ms. Matthews to try to, you know, take care of that, that's up to the board.
So, is that something the board would like to discuss?
I'd like to talk to Mr. Cochrane.
All right.
Because I wanna know what, what it is we're looking at here, Mr. Cochrane, I just don't, I see a bunch of duplex apartments, but I don't see anything that makes it attractive to that area.
Sure, if you can, you board, so...
Can you ease your mind with that a little bit?
Yeah, so, it is recently, North Carolina Building Code changed to allow quadruplexes into the residential side. So, we don't have full design, but the outside is gonna be a vertical style siding. Um, we do, um, landscaping around the buildings along the front, there, that's a wide open field right now with a pond, so the shrubbery or any landscaping we had in front is definitely gonna be adding to the area and not taken away from it, especially with some of the surrounding properties in the shape that they're in.
Would, would you be...
Something like hardy board?
I'm sorry?
Is it something, aside in something like hardy board, or...
A vertical style siding, yeah.
Could y'all, um, as a conditional use, could y'all put something like, uh, Leyland cypres across the front or something, the, the ones that grow kinda tall, and would that be too much to ask?
Is there...
I don't know this right.
A, a number, or, um, you know, what, the, the buffer, are we looking for a screen?
Yeah, maybe a screen, I mean, what do you think about a screen across the front?
When you talk about buffers, you wanna have in mind what function you want it to, uh, perform. If you want it to be a complete opaque screen, you have to do that in the planting rate. Uh, if you want it to be something decorative, you can use different ornamental plants, understory, however you wanna do it. It, the, the giant green abivorti is the, the Leyland cypress that doesn't get the disease now. I know those are used heavily, but that is a, that is a plant that produces a screen. It's green all year round, it, it, it looks like a big cedar tree, uh, and a lot of folks use that. I, I don't know that, and, and a landscaping expert, I'm, I'm not one, uh, I know that that plant's been used in, on many occasions, uh, to, to perform that function.
I mean, I had them at my house, and I'm glad they got ones that don't have bugs now, because the bugs got in there and killed them when they got pretty tall.
That's generally why I don't like them, 'cause you have them all nice and pretty, and then they start falling over and it looks stupid holes with little bitty trees trying to replace it. That's why I'm, like the decor- decorative landscaping that you mentioned, that's something we were gonna do by default anyways, um...
Yeah, I knew y'all was gonna do that, and, and I'm okay either way, but I didn't know if the board had any, any desire for that, but I don't know how expensive those trees are, but I know y'all fix it nice anyhow, so...
Is it pretty much bare right there as it stands?
It is bare across the road.
It's completely, yeah.
What we do is an improvement.
Right.
Correct.
That's where I'm at, I'm good either way.
Okay. I know y'all do a, a good job, so...
That's a job, yeah.
Appreciate it. For asking those questions, all right? So, any other discussion by the board? Thank you very much.
Absolutely, thank y'all so much.
All right. All right, staff recommendation?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, subject property's rule and character being surrounded by single family dwellings consisting of stick built homes and double and single wide manufactured homes. One thousand feet to the north of the subject tract is the Randall and Heather Thomas rezoning to C Z H C, uh, that was before you in September of last year. The Thomas property is owned for a mechanic and boat repair shop as well as boat storage. A landscaping business is to be operated from this site as well. While the character of the subject tract is rural, less than three thousand feet to the east is the Highway eight corridor, specifically the Wildlife Rec Access Road Intersection where the Mazatlan Family Rest, Mexican Restaurant is located. Turning left the opposite way out of the subject tract, it's around thirty two hundred feet back by the, the park property... Turning left the opposite way out of the subject tract, it's around thirty-two hundred feet back by the, the park property to the NC Highway Eight intersection and quote downtown Southmont with its commercial services. Staff brings this to the board's attention to demonstrate that the subject tract is in close proximity to Highway Eight or the Highway Eight corridor and the services offered there. There's no question that if approved, this project will change the character of, of this part of Owen Road. Following the announcement of the plans for the Davison County, for Davison County to construct a new regional community center on the three-hundred-and-fifty-eight acre former Jack Frank property, staff would contend that this area and Odell, or Owen, Owen Road will have changed or changing conditions in the near future. Combine this factor with the diversity of uses located along Owen Road and the rezoning, the rezoned Thomas property, and staff feels the proposed project could be the first of many changes for the area. Based on the above factors, staff feels this request meets Article Seven Administration of Davison County Zoning Ordinance due to change or changing conditions. A secondary argument can be made that change or change of conditions in the housing market with the escalation of prices makes this type of use a need in the community by offering habitation for those that do not want to purchase property at today's prices. Uh, said property is located in an area that is recognized by Davison County Land Development Plan to promote residential growth in Statement Six-One, Six-Two, Six-Three, Six-Six, Six-Seven, Six-Eight, Six-Nine, and Six-Ten. Support the zoning amendment. Staff would recommend approval and ask you to adopt a statement of consistency, please.
Okay, alright.
Yes, ma'am.
Can I hear you say that it has a landscaping business on the site as well?
The, um, the landscaping business-
Is that a rectangle area?
Let's see, let me get back to my zoning map, Commissioner Watford, and I'll show you. Uh, that's the wrong way, okay? Forgive me. Um, the landscaping business is the, uh, the Thomas rezoning, which is right here. All of, it's hard to read, but this red up here, all of this is CUHC. Every bit of that, there's boat storage approved here, there's a little shop, a boat, a boat repair shop and, and some boat storage on this property and landscaping operated off of this track. That was before the board back in September.
Yeah, that's the one we just rezoned.
Yes, sir.
The other ones?
Yes.
About, I thought you-
Not on the, I-
On this property.
No, on this property, it's completely vacant right now. My apologies.
And, and what, what is that little, uh, rectangular area that's not?
Right here?
Yes.
I honestly don't know. I, I, I would assume that it, it's maybe the adjoining neighbor utilizing the property.
In, in the past, from my understanding, there was several mobile homes on the side.
Okay.
They were populated and-
Removed.
Calling in or whatever.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
Alright, I'm not sure I closed the public hearing, but if I didn't, I did now.
You did.
Again, can't remember anymore. Alright, um, we got staff recommendations. Do we have a motion?
I'm making a motion, Mr. Chairman, that we approve this and adopt a resolution on statement of consistency.
You have a motion, second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, good luck, mm, yep. Alright, moving on to, uh, seven C.
Last but not least, we have a request by Warford Development LLC to rezone property located in Silver Hill Township, Tax Map Thirteen, Lot Fifty-Seven, containing thirty-three point six-seven acres more or less. Said property is located on the north side of NC Highway Forty-Seven, approximately three-tenths of a mile west of the Beck's Church Road intersection. Rezoning is requested to change from that of RS Low-Intensity Residential District to that of CZRM-One Conditional Zoning Medium-Density Residential District. This is an additional application that's taking advantage of the recent text amendment that we just got done with and the change in the building code. Um, and I need to get to the right map. Thank you. If I could get my dr- I'm s- I'm pushing buttons the wrong way tonight. My dyslexia is kicking in. Here we go, sorry about that. Um, the thirty-three point six-seven acres is this entire property. What's in blue and the crosshatched yellow area are all the same tract. That's a total of, of the thirty-three point six-seven. The area to be rezoned is ten acres right here in the crosshatched area. If you'll remember, several years ago, Mr. Warford did the same exact type of development right here to the west. This is NC Highway Forty-Seven. Sheetz's Bottom is just off the map, Highway Eight's over here. Uh, this is Beck's Church Road, Old Mountain Road, the new DG. Uh, Central Davison is just off to the east of the map. Um, Mr. Warford is proposing to do a, a second development, campus-style, with the quadplexes and, and one cabin on it, uh, right next to his existing development. I'll, I'll yield the floor to Mr. Chairman to open the public hearing and, and, uh, I think Daniel Smith is here to speak on behalf of the application.
Alright, now declare the public hearing open, Daniel, if you wanna come on up.
Yes, sir. Daniel Smith, uh, with Red Link Realty, I'm here to, uh, represent Warford Development. I'm at one-thirty-four Timberview Drive in Lexington. And I'll make this, uh, relatively short and sweet. Um, Garrett Neal with Neal Civil Engineering is who put these plans together and he couldn't be here tonight to, uh, present, so I told Adam I would do it, take over. Um, so the main goal of this property is, uh, five quadruplexes and, um, one cabin at the back, so that makes up for a total of twenty-one units. Um, Warford Development owns the adjoining parcel, uh, next to this. And Adam did a development which he still owns and maintains that was all duplexes. The goal on this property is to, again, take advantage of that text amendment change, move to quadruplexes. Um, what Adam likes about it, what the developers like about it, is that you can do, uh, the same number of units, but you don't have to be as invasive on the property. Uh, one of the goals here, there's a lot of big oak trees and things like that. And, um, they've got a winding road that's set up that goes through that. They won't have to, um, take out as much and mass grade as much. Um, it's still gonna be a septic site, they're still gonna have to clear some areas where that septic will be. But, uh, doing quadruplexes and reducing that footprint will be less impactful on the entire area. So it will be an asphalt road coming in. Um, the cabin that we are talking about is located at the very end of the cul-de-sac. The property overlooks, that's the area there. There's a, um, creek at the back of the property where the topography falls off pretty hard. That will basically be the property line. Um, we're gonna make sure that we serve out, survey out enough to get the units that are here. Right now, the way the contract's set up, it's for ten acres. So it will roughly be ten acres after it's surveyed out. Um, that's just another view of the layout. The hatched areas are the septic areas that are being proposed. Um, the square or rectangular boxes are the quadruplexes. You can see, um, how they kinda snake in through, off of Forty-Seven. And then, let's see, I think some of those were the conditions that were mentioned. I know that all of these buildings will be brick. Um, Adam's still in the process with the architect of actually designing them. But they will be similar in style to the duplexes that he did on the parcel beside that. And I think may have some photos. So that is the parcel that joins this one, and so that's going into the, uh, neighborhood. The quadruplexes will be two-story, uh, to reduce the footprint. Um, the goal will be to have the quadruplexes on a similar foot- footprint to those duplexes. So if you see those duplexes, you imagine those just going up. Um, and I think that Adam's talked about maybe a one-and-a-half-story style with a shed dormer. Um, again, the quality inside will be, um, quartz countertops, um, high-end finishes, brick. There will be concrete pads, uh, for all of the quadruplexes. And then, again, a fully asphalted road that goes in, which will be a private road. Um, and I think that's generally the main point. That's the development now, that's the inside of the units. And, uh, you can see the outside there. Uh, he'll have a landscaping berm that is built up on the front, uh, that will likely exceed anything that, uh, any landscaping requirements that Davis County would have in their zoning. And those are some other projects. So that's another project by Warford Development that's over here at fifteen East Second Avenue, uh, in downtown Lexington. And that's the inside of those units. So, um, that's a twelve-unit building, so it's not gonna be anything that, uh, large and invasive in the county. Um, it'll be a four-unit building, so it'll be significantly, uh, smaller than that building. But, uh, that's just kind of an image to show some of the quality that, uh, Adam's looking to do. And that's all I have for now. If you have any questions or-
Any questions?
Concerns?
No, sir.
Alright.
Of, of course, I got one.
Yeah.
Does each unit have its own driveway?
Own driveway? No, it will have, each unit will have a parking pad in front of it. So in that style of development there-
But individually, you're not-
No, yeah, they'll all have parking.
Okay.
And in fact, um, Adam had mentioned based on this development that he was going to add some parking at a spot down the way. So as they have visitors, uh, they have some, a little bit of offload parking. Because he said at this one, um, you could park at the back in the cul-de-sac, but he wanted to have a more dedicated space for parking as people had visitors, so.
What do they dedicate? Two, two lots, two parking spaces per?
I'm not sure what, it, it, I mean, these have two per, um, units. And that's what those would have, is two per unit, but they would probably, you, did you have a?
I'll, I'll, I'll probably make another, I would say, at least ten more parking spaces kinda mixed in there so-
I know there's a parking requir- requirement, Mr. Chairman, I don't know what it is. I know it's at least two, I think it's based on bedroom.
I was just wondering-
Yeah.
How, how that works, you know? Um, okay, alright, any other questions? None? Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody wishing to speak in favor or in opposition? Seeing none, I'm gonna declare this public hearing closed. Uh, Mr. Jones, I'm sure if you got any questions, you'll speak up, right?
Yes, I don't have any questions about this one, thank you.
Alright, um, go ahead, Mr. Crick, and let us know staff's recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the, uh, proposed conditions by the applicant, street yard landscaping above and beyond the minimum requirement. He does have a landscaped berm with some foliage on the top of it on his existing development. I would envision it being similar to that. He's gonna do a twenty-foot hard-surface road, dustless access road with turnaround. Quad- he's, he's conditioned quadruplex structures to be composed of at least fifty percent brick material. Um, and the applicant will make every effort to retain as much foliage to the fullest extent possible. There's that vague condition, but with septic in-ground absorption, you don't ever know kinda what you need to take out. So committing to a, to a hard number can be difficult. Um, this property is contiguous to RM-One zoning to the south, uh, NC Highway Forty-Seven. The contiguousness would satisfy the rationale for zoning change, uh, from the zoning ordinance to expand an existing district and satisfy Article Seven. Um, Mr. Warford's CZRM-One district is already to the west, also contiguous where he did the duplex project. Um, the small commercial note of NC Forty-Seven and Beck's Church Road and Old Mountain Road is eight-hundred foot to the east. This area has undergone some minor growth with, uh, addition of Dollar General. The close proximity of this commercial area can provide minor goods and services for continued development area. Staff would suspect the applicant has or will reach out to NC DOT for a driveway permit. It is mentioned here as just a reminder to assure safe ingress egress to NC Highway Forty-Seven. I'm sure he'll do that. Um, said property is located in an area that is recognized by the County Land Development Plan to promote residential growth in Statement Six-One, Six-Two, Six-Six, Six-Seven, Six-Eight, Six-Nine, Six-Ten, Seven-Three, and Seven-Four. Support the amendment. Um, we recommend approval and ask you to adopt a statement of consistency.
Okay, can I get a motion?
I have a motion, Mr. Chairman, and adopt the state, uh, the resolution on statement of consistency.
Second?
Second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank y'all.
That motion carries.
Thank you, Lee.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all, good night. Alright, items on the consent agenda, anybody wish?
We got one more.
Oh, yep. Do I have a motion to, uh, continue seven D till April the fourteenth?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, uh, consent agenda, any one, any one wishing to pull anything off the consent agenda?
Seeing no changes, I'd make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as read.
Alright, motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright. Thank you, Lee.
Thank y'all.
Did you say after consent agenda you was gonna do the, um?
Yes, if we've got anyone that wants to come forward for one of the proclamation.
Is that now? Is that when you wanna do that?
Nothing except the proclamation for telecommunications week, is that what you're here for? Yeah, no? Okay, well then evidently they didn't, no, no.
Okay, alright. Good deal, alright. Nine A, request, uh, to schedule a public hearing for the TEFRA matter.
My name's Charles Boyer, I'm an attorney at Robinson Brad John Henson, Charlotte, North Carolina. And I've been asked to come here tonight to preview, um, the request for a TEFRA hearing, um, for the next meeting. So the main request that I'm asking is for the, on behalf of the National Finance Authority in Novant, we're requesting the County Board of Commissioners hold a public hearing and approve the issuance of tax exempt bonds solely for the purposes of Section One Forty-Seven F of the Internal Revenue Code and the related applicable law governing the National Finance Authority. What this is, is, Novant is receiving the benefit of tax exempt bonds and in each county where one of the projects will be located, um, we seek the approval of the county for this federal disclosure requirement. So being the Board of Commissioners, you are the elected representatives of the county and can hold a public hearing. It's a federal tax requirement, so we have to come to the local jurisdictions. I've shared copies of the notice and copies of the simple resolution that documents the public hearing and approves for the purposes of Section One Forty-Seven F. Um, I'm happy to go through this little slideshow. This is just kind of an internal slideshow I made of frequently asked questions as I go around the state and present this at multiple jurisdictions. I thought it might just be helpful. I don't have a remote, um, so.
Have you looked over this, uh, Adam?
Yes, I have, um.
Do you have any opposition to it?
No, I, I don't, um, this is, um, it's in, in order for, for-
It's a procedure, I take it, that for them to get-
Well, yeah, in order for Novant, um, and the, um, that, what is it, the-
National Finance Authority.
National Finance Authority to, to get tax-exempt bonds. Um, they need, you know, a local governing body such as yourselves to approve it.
Approve it.
Um, so that-
Does the board have any heartburn here on this one before?
The, uh, bottom line right there, pretty much release of liability from the county.
Right.
That's the main-
Yeah.
One that I'd like to advertise.
Yeah.
Hold, but, um-
I wonder if we need to see the slideshow after we see that, so that's, uh- Do you want to?
Yeah.
Yep.
I started on the Novant board in, in, uh, Thomasville, should I recuse this or no?
Um-
Think so.
I wouldn't think so, 'cause you don't earn any personal gain from-
That's right.
I can confirm that for you, but I would not think so, as it's not a substantive approval. It's a procedural tax law and disclosure.
Okay, thank you.
We can definitely confirm that for you before the hearing.
Just wanna make sure, didn't want it after the fact.
Adam, we'll look, we'll look into that and-
But he's gotta vote now.
Okay, well, um, I, I think for purposes of, I, 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 honestly, I think for purposes of, of voting, um, we're really just voting to schedule a hearing right now, right?
That's right.
So I think to vote, to, to schedule a hearing, I, I, I don't think there would be any, um, possible reason for rec- recusal.
I agree with you, yep.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood, because I didn't realize the vote was for the hearing. I, I was talking about the actual approval next time, so.
And, and I'm, of course, you know, we need legal advice, but I'm kinda like Commissioner Shell. If he has no personal gain to it, then I'm not so sure, uh, he's obligated to recuse himself. Actually, it's, it's the other way around. He's obligated to vote for-
To vote, yeah, that's right.
Right, so.
Mr. Chairman, do we have a date?
Uh, April the fourteenth.
Make a motion with it, we scheduled this for public hearing on April the fourteenth.
Second.
At six PM, motion and a second. Any other discussions? Hear none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any in opposition? Alright, motion carries.
And I'm sure at the, after the hearing, that, that those questions that you wanna bring up, we'll probably need to know then.
Um, yes, and I, I have sent a version of this slideshow that I can make sure gets around to anyone that needs it. Um, and happy to, at the actual hearing, answer any questions. But unfortunately, it's, it's not that entertaining, it's federal tax code.
Very dry. Very dry.
Didn't really want to-
I'll try to give you a break there.
All right. Nine B, information technology. Uh, Mr. Martin?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Commissioners, um, I'm gonna call Daniel Perry, our IT Director, come forward just, uh, I'm gonna try to tee this up for him, but in case you have any technical questions for him. Uh, what this is, is a re- a request, um, for the board to approve, uh, replacement of our servers at three locations. One here in the governmental center of the Sheriff's Department and the nine-one-one center. Um, those have been part of our capital improvement plan, and they're slated to be replaced in two thousand and twenty-eight. The support for the existing servers, uh, runs out this year. So, in lieu of doing that, we're looking at going ahead and replacing them now. Uh, because to do- to go ahead and re-up, so to speak, the- the support for the existing servers would cost about three hundred thousand dollars per year, um, over the next five years. So, it'd be about one point five million dollars. And we could replace them now with five years of support, uh, for just under eight hundred thousand dollars. Uh, this was actually on the last agenda. We had gotten a quote from one of the vendors, uh, on state contract. And Daniel went back and got additional quotes and was able to get a better quote than state contract. Uh, saved about a little over a hundred thousand dollars, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Uh, but you should have in your packet there, this is, um, and I'm gonna mess up the name of the company. Is it Tigo?
Tigo.
Tigo is, um, the one that is being requested. Uh, total cost on that is seven hundred and ninety-one- seven ninety-one eighty-seven. Um, and that would be coming out of our capital reserve fund. Uh, so what is being requested is to approve the purchase of the new servers. Um, also to authorize the chairman to sign, um, contract upon approval of the county attorney. And then also to approve the necessary budget amendment, uh, to move the funds to go ahead and pay for that. And with that, Daniel, do you have anything that you want to add?
So, do we know anything about this low bidder?
Um, we've used it before, uh, for some work at the Health Department. Uh, they've done our HIPAA compliance testing. And they have also quoted, um, Lenovo servers, and that is who we currently use for our workstations.
Um, so you have references on them or whatever, I mean, they're-
They are, and they are in North Carolina based. Um, Tigo is based in Raleigh. Lenovo's, um, North American headquarters is in Morris- Morrisville, North Carolina.
I'm good if you could.
What is the difference in Tigo one, option one, and option two?
Um, option one is going- is using the, uh, current software like we use VMware. Uh, option two is switching to, um, another product called Nutanix. It's just a different type of virtualization for servers.
Does same thing.
Does the same thing, basically. It would require a little bit more of a learning curve, um, for the staff to learn something new than what we're already using, but.
What do you do with the old servers?
Um, they would bo- they would become, um, as long as they're still running, they would become development for us to do t- testing with, with other products and stuff. Um, and then once they start dying, we would basically wipe and remove them from the racks.
No value to them?
Not really. Um, they have to be- in order for them to continue being used in- on top of the three hundred thousand, we'd have to pay about thirty thousand dollars, um, to replace some chips inside to make them eligible to upgrade.
Hmm, yeah.
All right, out of my league there, so, all right. Do we have a- a motion?
I make a motion. We approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Motion going.
Opposed session, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
The reason I did that is to.